One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Pastor Burke is in Austin right now, so if you don't mind, I'd like to do the invocation. If we can please bow our heads. Lord, as we gather today for this meeting, we ask that all the businesses be taken care of here be independently, and it be in the best for all of our citizens. We ask for continued blessings upon our families and upon everybody here. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. The Pro Tem Mayor's Activity Report.
Mayor's not in, we'll begin with Commissioners' Activity Reports.
I have two things. I'd like to point out that we received two awards by the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, otherwise known as TAPS. One is called the Lone Star Recreation Programming Achievement Award, Class Two, presented to the City of Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department for retired, now what? On March the 2nd, 2017. They are working together with the School of Public Health and other partners to create a wonderful senior citizens program for our community. The second one, which is very heavy, is also from the Texas Recreation and Parks Society. It is the Planning Excellence Award, presented to the City of Brownsville for the Active Plan Lower Rio Grande Valley, March the 2nd, 2017. We're very proud of both awards. Thank you to our Parks and Rec Department and all of our partners. Secondly, I'd like to make everyone aware that the Second Annual Drainage Report is coming up this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Public Library. I began this drainage report last year in an effort to educate the public about what drainage issues are going on, what happens when water falls in the city, and what we are doing as a city to improve those situations. So it is a free session. There will be door prizes as well as hot dogs, so please come out on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the main Public Library for that.
My only report is basically just a comment. People have taken to social media, which is the end thing to do right now, and asking for their elected officials to respond to certain items and to certain things that might be going on at the city or that fall on the agenda. If we don't answer, there are things that... I just wanted to make it clear that there are things that are held by litigation. There are things that are going through procurement processes. So don't think that an elected official wouldn't want to answer your question. It's not that we don't want to answer your question. It's just that we're governed and ruled by rules and laws. They need to be obeyed and respected. So it's very easy for somebody... I'll throw this out there, who's seeking office right now, but yet doesn't know what goes on on the inside, as far as the process and how it goes. So it's very easy to say, "This is what's going on at the city, you should be alerted to citizens." But in reality, the truth is something else. But because we're bound by the law, we cannot release that information. So that's just, you know, a comment on why some people have been... You know, you're not responding to when a citizen is asking you a question. It's not that we don't want to respond. It's just that we have to follow certain rules and certain laws when you sit up here in this kind of a position or in this kind of a seat. Yeah, thank you. Presentations? Proclamation, I'm sorry.
The proclamation for Boy Scout Eric Aima. We'll continue until he... Presentation, Employee of the Month, Monique Esmercado.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Commission, please help me welcome our Employee of the Month for March, Monique Mercado. You all know her. You all know her, she's done presentations to not just the City Commission, but also the Planning and Zoning. She was hired not too long ago, December 3rd, 2014. She's taken on a huge responsibility of being able to showcase our planning department, do presentations. She works in our zoning and the responsibilities that go with that. She does very well in dealing with our public and our community. And she's a huge asset, and she's also a Texas A&amp;M Aggie, so... She is receiving the plaque and the pin. You don't have a watch on, yes?
Yes, I do.
Well, here's another pretty watch, and it is a girl's watch.
All right, thank you.
And of course, she'll be eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December. And she knows how to speak to you also, she'll have some good words.
Thank you. Good evening, City Commissioners. I would just like to say thank you, and thank you to my directors, Ms. Concenta Minor and Ms. Ana Hernandez, for this recognition. It's definitely a rewarding experience, and I'll continue to work harder every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
Next, we have the U.S. Small Business Presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we brought in, as we move forward in the city plaza, the one-stop shop. On the process, we did start one of our partners is Angela Burton. So I thought she'd come and give you a quick rundown of what she does and how we are assisting her in committing that one-stop shop.
Okay, let me see if I can figure out how to... At least it's not taller than I am. Oh, yay! Good afternoon, my name is Angela Burton. Many of you obviously know me, and I am the District Director for the SBA's Lower Rio Grande Valley District Office. I'm going to go through a short presentation, and I've been working with Michael, and so I'd like to thank him for inviting me and putting me on the agenda today and allowing me to talk to you all. It's been a little over a year since we signed a Strategic Alliance Memorandum. A lot of that was around the Veterans Resource Center. But we're not only doing work within the Veterans Resource Center, but a few other things. I just simply wanted to give you a brief today and a couple of highlights as to what we're doing. Obviously, I have to do the housekeeping items. The U.S. Small Business Administration was founded in 1953 by the Eisenhower Administration, and its mission is to aid, counsel, and assist entrepreneurs as they start, operate, and expand their businesses. The agency is a pretty small agency compared to a lot of the government agencies. We have about 2,000 employees nationwide. We're divided into 10 regions with 68 district offices. We have 10 district offices in Texas... I'm sorry, 6 district offices in Texas. And we're lucky enough down here in the Lower Rio Grande Valley to have a district office that covers 14 counties. We cover 14 counties, which is about 176,000 small business firms in the area. So what do we do? Contracting, counseling, and capital, and we call it the three Cs and the D, disaster assistance. We provide counseling and training, we facilitate access to capital, we increase federal procurement and contracting opportunities, and we support folks during disasters. And if you look up here, actually, in our particular backyard in Brownsville, we have a number of services for counseling. We have the UTRGV Small Business Development Center, which houses two counselors off Price Road on the incubator, which is partially funded by the SBA. We have the Women's Business Center, which we have Andrea here, who's the Executive Director, and I'd like to introduce her, and I'm sure you guys know her. We have the UTRGV Veterans Business Outreach Center, which also covers this area, specific to veterans. We have SCORE, RGV. We actually have a certified development company right here in Brownsville, which actually grew out of the City of Brownsville, which was the Brownsville Local Development Company. They do 504 loans. And then we have a UZAC, which is the export folks, and they come down whenever we request that they come down. In addition to the resource partners, SBA has launched several counseling initiatives that the City of Brownsville has been able to take advantage of. One of those is Boots to Business Reboot, which is a curriculum for veterans in our community, as well as the spouses of veterans. The Encore Entrepreneurship with AARP, where we're providing services or information to folks that are 50... Entrepreneurs that are 50 years or older. And then we have the Scale Up RGV, which originally is a grant funded through the SBA. It was originally for the Upper Valley, but we were able to get it for the entire Rio Grande Valley resubmit. The SBA basically has two flagship sources of funding, which is the 7A and the 504 loan programs. And last year, in this district, we did 226 loans totaling $66.3 million. When you look at the number of jobs it created, which was 648, and the jobs that it retained was 1,668, you know, that's substantial. Our number of loans decreased last year from the year before. In 2015, we had a record year. The number of loans decreased 5%. The dollar value decreased 31.8%. As you can see, our top lenders, I'll name the top three, is Compass, Wells Fargo, and JP Morgan. And then when you look at the loan numbers, Hildago County is 106 of those, Oasis 44, and Cameron County 41. When you look at the bottom there, Cameron County did 41 loans totaling $6.7 million, creating 75 jobs and retaining 324. But when you look at Brownsville, we did 21 of those loans at 510,000, created five jobs, and retained 131. The two lenders in Brownsville that were active were Compass Bank and Wells Fargo. So far this year, we're at 71 loans, year-to-date, end of February, at $33.8 million. The number of loans from last year is down 16.5, but the dollar value of those loans is up 22.9 or 23%. Cameron County is at nine loans at $4 million. We had a couple of... Historically, we don't do much on the island. We had one large loan on the island this year. And then Brownsville is at four loans at $120,000. So it has decreased from this time last year 55%. Number of loans and almost 53% the dollar value. Lastly, I'll talk a little bit about contracting. The government is the largest single buyer of products and services. They do more than $500 billion in goods and services. The SBA works to make sure that 23% of that $500 billion goes to small business in the area. So in our area, we have two types of certification. We have the 8A, which is an SBA certification, and we have the Hub Zone certification. And then we have self-certifications with the service-disabled, the woman-owned business, and the small disadvantaged. If you look at the chart, the total number of 8A firms in my portfolio are 25. Eight of those are in Cameron County and four in Brownsville for the 8A program. But if you go down here on the self-certifications, and you go all the way down, we have a total of 476, which 89 of them are Cameron, and 41 are actually right here in Brownsville. The number, though, that I want you to pay attention to that is of benefit to Brownsville is right here. When we look at our Hub Zone, Brownsville has 87 Hub Zone tracks. And what does that mean? That means if you are a business in a Hub Zone track and you become certified, you have the ability to get contracts. And if you look at the map here, Brownsville, all the orange is Hub Zone census tracks. And so this is an opportunity, an economic development opportunity for Brownsville, because if you're actually located in a Hub Zone or you're recruiting folks or businesses, you may want to try to put them in a Hub Zone, because they'll be eligible for government contracting. Right now, we have one certified Hub Zone. And actually, I'm proud to announce that the Women's Business Center was able to recently certify or get another Hub Zone business certified, and that particular Hub Zone business has already gotten a contract. So that's job creation. On the disaster assistance, just quickly, obviously, you know, whenever there's a disaster, the SBA are pretty much the second pair of boots on the ground next to FEMA. And we provide loans, and this is the only time we provide direct loans to victims of disaster. It could be a home loan, it could be your business, it could be a rental loan. It could be, even if there is a disaster in another area and it is affecting businesses or folks in our area, they're eligible for a disaster loan. Okay, now to the good part. So this is a little timeline. So in January, we signed the Strategic Alliance Memorandum. By February, we organized, the SBA organized, in cooperation with UTRGV and the city, a Boots to Business Reboot, where we graduated eight veterans from this curriculum. Then in March, I invited our Regional Administrator down, who's a political appointee. She came down and congratulated Elia Sandoval of Easy Solutions. He was the actual Small Business Person of the Year winner. And what was great about that is we even moved over to May, where when we had the ceremony, we had it in Brownsville. And it was the first time ever that the Small Business Week person had been recognized in the community that they came from. And it was with and in collaboration with the City of Brownsville and UTRGV. And in September, we were able to... The other thing about what was great about the Small Business Week is we invited the franchise owner of Jason's Deli down, and he spoke. He owns almost every Jason's Deli franchise from here to Houston. And he was very eloquent in his speaking, along with the Commissioner. And so we were bringing folks in from Corpus, from Laredo, to Brownsville for that particular ceremony. So in September, we were able to celebrate the award of the Women's Business Center, which is a $150,000 grant, whereas the Brownsville Chamber has to match that grant. And I have to tell you that we are just very happy, and we're very... Andrea and her team are doing a great job, and I think this Women's Business Center is a wonderful asset to Brownsville, because they can come, anybody can come. It's not just for women, but anybody can come and get small business assistance. And then in October, in working with Michael, we decided that in order to support small business in the area and to improve services in Brownsville, we did a training, a resource training, to the permitting and health, some of the permitting and health department. And this has become a best practice in the SBA, meaning that when you have your permitting inspectors and your health inspectors on the front lines with these businesses, that they have some kind of knowledge that if they see an issue or a problem, or even be able to say, "You know what? If you need help, there's a Women's Business Center, there's a Small Business Development Center if you're a veteran." In order for them to have the knowledge and the resources available to support the small businesses that they're working with. The other thing that we've been working on that may be of interest is a lot of your contracts, or some of your contracts may be through federal government. You'll have to go out for bids and things like that for federal government contracts. They may be requiring you to use a certain percentage of women-owned or veteran-owned, or whatever it may be. And so I've sat down with Michael and also some folks in your purchasing department and taught them the Dynamic Small Business Search, which will allow the City of Brownsville to expand their vendor list to those particular businesses that are technically already certified. So I think that's about it. I appreciate your attention, and again, you know, Brownsville's my home, and I'm very happy to serve you, and I'm very grateful for the time that you made for me to talk about what we've done. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Angela, I just wanted to encourage people to take advantage of those loans. I want to say maybe about two years ago, I went to Compass Bank, and one of my jobs is to restore old homes, and several I've done here downtown. And that line of credit has come in super handy. And it's created jobs, like you said. And also, on the procurement assistance, I had an internship once, and I know that's a valuable tool for small businesses who want to maybe sell their product or service to a government agency. So I encourage people to take advantage of that as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
They always say the best time to get a loan is when you don't need it.
Thank you, Angela.
Consent Agenda Items A through J?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we are going to move Agenda Items 10, 11, and 12.
Motion.
Next.
Motion to move 10, 11, and 12 next.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gow, second by Commissioner De Leon. All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.
Item number 10, consideration and action to adopt Resolution Number 2017-022, authorizing the renaming of a portion of West 6th Street to Incarnate Ward Academy Drive from West Jefferson to Resaca Boulevard.
Good evening. We have a request to rename a portion of West 6th Street from West Jefferson Street to Resaca Boulevard. The proposed name is Incarnate Ward Academy. No houses are being affected, they're facing the side streets. And we also published a notice in the local newspaper asking for comments. We waited 30 days, and we got no responses, either for or against. We don't anticipate any problem, and recommend approval.
Before we take a vote, I'd like to make a note of my extension, because I serve on the Incarnate Ward Board. So just avoid the problem.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, item number 11, consideration and action to award a contract for purchase, delivery, and installation of bus shelters for the City of Brownsville B Metro Department.
Good evening, Commissioners, Pro Tem Mayor. B Metro staff is recommending approval of the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Pedro Gonzalez Construction LLC of Brownsville, Texas, for a total amount of $191,999.95. For bus stop improvements to include installation of shelters, bus paths, and sidewalks with ADA improvements as part of our bus stop improvement project citywide, these improvements will be specific to Routes 6 and 8. This project is being funded through a BCIC grant, of which 80% of that is coming from the grant, and 20% is from the general fund. The time for completion of this project is approximately 150 consecutive calendar days.
How many shelters are you actually building?
It's a total of...
Seven shelters.
It's seven shelters, but how many bus stop improvements?
Eleven.
Eleven bus stop improvements.
Four of the 11 are sidewalk improvements.
Now, Ms. Amora, I think this is the third time we've approved, I think, for bus shelters. I think the first time, and then we found all these shelters at the Colunga Building. And then I think the second time around, I actually brought it up that, I mean, we keep buying shelters, but they just never seem to actually get installed. And so now, I guess you're requesting money for more shelters and for sidewalk improvements, or...
It's a combination of bus paths, shelters, sidewalks. And to my knowledge, I don't think we have any... How many shelters do we have?
We didn't have shelters. I think what the confusion on that issue was, is we did purchase a large amount of shelters. During the project, which I believe was New Freedom, we did run out of funding as far as putting in the required pads for the windstorm certification and everything like that. So we did have some excess shelters. We were going to roll over into the next project. So what we winded up doing is going ahead, and the areas where we did have shelters that were not covered under the original project, we went ahead and installed those shelters. But on this project, we will be doing... The seven shelters we are purchasing, they will be placed on-site, so...
And let me ask you, how come we've never looked at other funding sources? You see, I go around, I see Villarreal, and I see Beegum, and I see the Transformer Lawyer, and they have all these advertisements. Haven't we ever reached out? Because, I mean, it's a hefty price tag. I mean, I think it's about $10,000 each. If it's 11 and 7, it's 18. So, I mean, can't we get, like, one attorney to pay $5,000, and a company like Wingstop to pay another $5,000? And that way, we don't actually have to spend any money? And they get some advertisement at our bus stops? I mean, is there something we can do to actually ameliorate the cost?
I think right now, we actually have contracts with these vendors, and they are actually providing us funding for the advertising space on the buses and the shelters. And we generate approximately about $100,000 a year on advertising funding to help alleviate the general fund.
And isn't there a way where we could get them, like, a long-term, where, look, you'll have one side of the bus stop? I mean, I've got one, two, two on the inside, and one on the backside, so that's five. I mean, for $5,000, that'll be $2,000 a pop. So, I mean, what I'm asking is, isn't there a way where we could do some long-term contracts with these people to actually get them to pay for our shelters? And that way, we can actually get all the shelters we need across town?
Anything possible?
I think that that's something that you could probably bring up with staff. In other words, I understand where you're coming from, but in other words, you're making suggestions right now in an open session for suggestions as to how you can go about... Right now, the item is pertaining to the installation of bus shelters.
I understand, I understand, Mayor Pro Tem. The issue is that this is the third time, I think, I've raised this issue, so I mean...
And it's been noted that this is the third time you've raised it.
Okay, well then, I guess I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Next. Motion passes.
Thank you. Contract item number 12, consideration and action to award a term contract for commercial and industrial solid waste collection services for the City of Brownsville.
Do you know, Commissioner, we will revisit all the suggestions.
General Mayor, Pro Tem, City Commissioners, here before you with this item that was tabled last time. You have the information that was provided to you at this point. Once again, is there any questions? We still have the same under the procurement summary. It's the recommendation, as per staff, is to award a contract, a term contract, for commercial and solid waste collections to GMS. Do you have any questions at this point?
I guess I don't want to take anybody's time erroneously, so I guess I will move to not approve.
Second.
All those in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Actually, if I may, correction. If the City Secretary, I guess, if you could do it by a roll call? Because I moved to not approve. And there was a second? Well, I moved to reject all bids. I guess I was very clear. And there was a second, so again, motion to reject bids.
Second.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call for Commissioner?
Cesar De Leon, reject bid.
Deborah Portier, reject bid.
Rose Gow.
Bits.
Bits.
Reject.
Bids.
Reject, reject.
Thank you. At this time, we will go back to item number six, Boards and Commissions. Consideration and action to appoint or reappoint members to the Reinvestment Zone Number One Board.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we're bringing the tiers up to, the Reinvestment Zone Number One Board is to bring it back into action. We did, we do have the current members. As you can see, current board members are Robert Swatner, Ariel Chavez, Walker, Wicket, Maredo, and Terones. The individuals marked with the R have requested to be reappointed. And then the new applicants are Mr. Garcia and Jose Zambaripa. We did receive another application from Peter Sampaio, Patricio Sampaio, as a third applicant to this. So the idea is if you want to go ahead and appoint the individuals who already want to serve again, and then you have one opening for Fernando Terones.
For the opening, I'd like to appoint Mr. Sampaio.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
And on the remaining?
The remaining? Do you want the individual, or do you want to do the slate?
I'll move to reappoint the slate.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven.
Item number seven, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem. We currently have two members with expire terms. We received three applications for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The names are on the slide. So basically, we're asking for you tonight to reappoint or appoint two members.
I'll move to reappoint Troy Woodmore.
Second.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second.
So we have to appoint three, correct?
Two.
Two. I move to appoint Jose Wallace Garcia.
Well, second.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next agenda item, public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1217-E, adopting map depicting impact fee services areas in accordance with ordinance number 2016-2017-D.
So with this ordinance, we're trying to basically clarify the boundaries on the impact fee service areas that you already approved back in November. Some of the lines went through, you know, halfway through properties, didn't follow the right of ways. So we're just making sure that, you know, now we have reflecting the service area one and two. And so it's just, basically, this is just to clarify the boundary lines, and that's pretty much one of the main goals of bringing this map and have it adopted to make it official. So we're asking for your approval.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody have any comments on public hearing? And I'll entertain a motion. Just for clarification, the impact rates are already in place, right?
Yes, and they haven't adopted by City Commissioning back in November.
Which are half of what they used to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gowan, second by Commissioner Villarreal. All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Action item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Villarreal, second by Commissioner Gowan. All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Full comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. We are here seeking answers. Last week, we were present in reference to the Southmost Hike and Bike Trail. We have not yet gotten any response. We did get with the media, we did get a response from the city, as far as I'm aware. And the answer they're giving is that we were using Arco equipment, Arco hard hats, Arco trucks. We did use Arco hard hats and all that, representing the company that got awarded the project. We did as well to, you know, work as a team. You know, it's like when you work with, when you, where you're playing baseball, you know, some other team needs a pitcher, you go and use their jersey, you know? That's the way we see it. Now, the excuse too is that we didn't have a legal contract, and the contract's here. I mean, this is a formal contract with Arco, Zero Corporation, and it's for the scope of work performed in that specific project. Now, there's been other projects that Arco has been awarded to Zero Corporation, which is the Tapiz Building. We were there as well. That's a formal contract. And the Navara Street, which went into a dilemma, and we took him out of that dilemma. And as far as I know, the same bond that was issued on the hike and bike trail was the same bond they used at the Navara Street, which was a fake bond. Now, after the city finding out that the, that the bond was fake, as far as my understanding, Purchasing Department, and this is issued by Mr. Robert Luna, is giving a reference letter, a reference letter of these projects that were awarded to Arco. And in these projects, it states, "The Cellar Sidewalk, El Tapiz Reboot, Brownsville Gel Plumbing, and the Toledo, Toledo Street Improvements, Southmost Hike and Bike Trail." This was given on July 31st of 2015. I think the bond issue came up to light before that. Why would Purchasing give this letter as a reference? That is my question. And this was signed by Mr. Roberto Luna, which is the purchasing director. We are concerned, we do want answers, we are present here for, you know, we want to know what's going to happen, are we going to get paid? You know, we invested our time. This is a domino effect. You know, it not only damages us as individuals, it damages our family. You think I want to have my daughter here, hearing this? No. You know? It's very, very upsetting, very upsetting. And we do want answers, we do want, we want to know, who do we talk to? Who do we talk to? Who do we go with? We haven't gotten any response. It's been eight months. Mr. Mark Sossi here hasn't responded to our phone calls. He rejects us as far as going to his office. We want answers. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pro Tem, I'd like each of the individuals here to identify themselves for the completeness of the record.
Sus nombres, por favor. And they? Sus nombres, por favor. Filiberto Valhesteros? Filiberto Valhesteros? Valhesteros?
Aldo Arteaga, de Aldo's welding. Aldo Arteaga, mi compaño, es Aldo's welding.
Pedro Hernandez.
Pedro Hernandez. Que teman. Okay. Muchas gracias.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, answer by saying aye.
Aye.
You said adjourned, thank you.